And say that grievance procedure should be updated to the current town administrator and posted in the town administrator's webpage made available to all staff, department committees, and boards. In addition, posted on the town's website because the grievance procedure can be for in-town employees or residents of the town. Policies, procedures, practices. You know, the ADA, you know, states that public entity should make reasonable modifications in policies and practices and procedures when necessary to avoid discrimination on the basis of disability. The Town Berry does have a notice of non-discrimination policy. Again, it was obtained during the application process. But again, the, you know, same, well, the same thing. It is really not a known date when it was created. And again, it has Kevin Flynn as the town administrator and ADA coordinator. So that's, so that again, you know, updated and put it there, posted in the town administrator's webpage and, you know, and on the, you know, lots of things like that. So I believe we provide, yep, yep, no, yep, you already have it. So like I say, just updated and, you know, posted on your webpage. Getting to the end here. Reasonable accommodations based on what was available for review. Most included job descriptions. They have language on the working conditions and physical demands. I'm not going to go through that, you know, whole thing. But some of the things I did, you know, I will highlight on is the application for employment form that people must fill out in order to apply for a position now with Berry, you know, has a statement that says the town does not discriminate in hiring or employment on basis of race, color, religious, creed, national origin, sex, ancestry, sexual orientated as defined by law, and, you know, handicap. I recommend that the word handicap be replaced with the word disability on the, on that particular online form. And, you know, we have a sample reasonable accommodation policy and request form for adoption by this, like, as an appendic C and D. Maintenance. During the assessments, a number of observations were made in direct violation of Title II. This includes such items as accessible routes of travel that were not maintained during the winter resulting in snow-covered curb ramps, walkway ramps, interior, exterior doors with excessive operating outforces and closing speeds, and, you know, several other ones as recommended, as, you know, in the report itself. It's recommended that the facilities are inspected regularly to ensure compliance with program accessibility and to initiate repairs and related actions as required. Effective communication, auxiliary aids and services. Based on what was submitted in the self-evaluation survey as well as, you know, viewing the website and other available materials, it doesn't appear that there are, you know, any kind of information of this type on as part of the regular meeting notices, postings, and who to contact to arrange for accommodations. You know, the fire and the police supply department dispatch does have a TTY. And the library has several auxiliary aids like books on tape, or should I say books on CD, page magnifiers. And according to the town clerk, assistive listening devices are available through a private vendor. And in the actual self-evaluation, there's a nice piece here that should be included on all meeting agendas that, you know, that advertise if you need an accommodation to, you know, to contact the ADA coordinator. Website accessibility, you know, definitely not an expert in that, but I do have, you know, friends that have visually impaired who use Jaws, you know, the most recent version of Jaws, screen reading software. And she was able to easily navigate the Town Berry's website, including the individual departments and commission webpages. Folks use government websites by Gov. Office. They're a lot, very similar to, there's another very similar government website provided that also has, you know, very accessible, you know, platform for screen readers. Emergency preparedness, evacuation plans. You know, the website really doesn't contain a whole heck of a lot in terms of emergency preparedness. The emergency alerts tab under services brings one to an error message, 404 page not found, or 502 bad gateway. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. However, there is a 91-page document titled Berry Mitigation Plan that was developed with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And it was adopted by you folks in April of 2019. And that can be found on the web, the town's website, in the Public Safety tab under Government. So, yep, so the recommendation there is really just to make that more visible and then the, you know, to follow the guidance provided in Chapter 7 of the document, you know, the final plan document that Jim had a little too. That was one of the many pieces that we put in, that we, you know, put in before we even get to the meat of planning. And finally, last but not least, according to the town clerk, the polling occurs at the senior center in the Berry post two American Legion. And each location has an auto mark voter system terminal for voters with disabilities, including those with visually impairments. And it's placed in such a way that ensures privacy for the voting using the auto mark terminal because its screen is not visible to the voting public. And for, you know, both, both buildings do allow access for people with mobility impairments. But for a more detailed, you know, detailed description of its access, you know, just referring to the, the individual transition signs. So, you know, that is my piece. I know it's dry, but thank you for listening. And I'm going to turn it over to Jim for the transition plan.
So the format, I'm sure I believe you all have that. So the format we have for each facility is we have just a general description of what that facility is, what services provides. We have a photograph of the area outside. We like to put a general narrative. It could be depending on how extensive, it could be a page, it could be half page, it could be two pages. Because, you know, if you don't want to dive into all the details and specific and the codes and blah, 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 quickly can read down a narrative and bang, this is it. So we do that. And then we have detail, and then we have the detailed assessment, which includes the citation, exactly what it is as a non-compliance, in very specific terms why. And we have then the federal citation, the state citation, you know, you actually go. And these are, these are, this is the standards, the, so that thick is the ADA standards, 2010 federal ADA standards. And the ones here, whatever color that is, is the Fight for NCMR. So collectively, those are the standards that we have to follow when we do these assessments. So we have, you know, we have the citation state, federal. We have the detailed description of what specifically needs to be done. So for example, if a grab bar is half an inch too high, you say it's got to be lower to a certain range. I'll get that in a few minutes. And then we include, we call, you know, priority, feasibility and timeframe. Priority, we go one through four. So priority one, we go from getting into the building. Two would be access to goods and services. Three would be bathrooms. And then four would be anything else. Feasibility, same thing, one. So one would be, so let's say there's a, I think we had some protruding objects. Well, you got that there. So let's say that table or
Prudenza.
Prudenza, yes, was not there. And let's say the table is a little more far over. That's a protruding object because it's more than four inches from the wall and it's between 127 inches and 80 inches. So if I'm sitting here and I'm coming in and let's say your table is way back there, and I'm going to use that wall and I'm going to go right into it, you know, I'm going to do some damage to myself. So easy fix is that Jess, feasibility is one, could find, they could enter a small little table and place it right under that. Easy done. Easy fix. Priority feasibility two would be, let's say you have, let's say that's a doorknob, or maybe there's no tactile signage. Your facilities person or highway, DPW, whatever, could go in and change up the knob hard, change knob hardware or mount the sign at the proper height. Three, a little more complicated, let's say, you might actually not complicate. You have to hire a licensed contractor. Let's say your water closet, that's your toilet, it needs to be 18 inches on center from the near wall. And let's say it's only 16 inches on center from the near wall. You have to physically move that toilet two inches over to be 18 inches on center. And four would be something much more complicated, such as the old town hall, where if you want to stick money into the building and get vertical access between all levels, you have to hire an architect there and, you know, much more, much more complicated.
Is it required that we make access to all three floors in the town hall?
That is a good question. Said it is not required if fours aren't used. So I'm going to go back to specifically, we've had this, but I'm thinking it's recently, Piers Am, they're all town hall. And they've got the upper level, which is more just the, what I'm looking for, mezzanine, but it's more, it's more than a mezzanine. But so they basically blocked off access to that. They have rope across the stairs. Stairs are non-compliant, but there's no access. So basically, they recently put in access so that you can get into the main level and you can get into the, which is not the ideal. They get into the bottom level, which is no vertical connection between the two. But you can access, but essentially the functions between the two levels are distinct and different. So, you know.
Okay.
So you can get into, there are some issues on the lower level, but you can minus lower level and you can get into the main level, but the, I'll get back to that. But you can basically totally restrict the upper levels. That's going to be very costly because there are a lot of things up there which are not compliant. The bathrooms aren't compliant. The stairs, horrible. The stairways, the railings. I mean, everything that
They're kind of nice, though.
Yeah, they're nice.
[laughing]
But anyway, that would be, yeah, there's a lot there.
So our best bet would be to restrict access?
If you, yes, if the use up there is minimal. You know, you've got a stage up there on the second level against there, which has no railings. Your whole railings. Now, you can, if you got other means of access stairs, a lot of municipalities have been in these old historic town halls. They've got a variance for their old historic, the old historic railings. They have another staircase and railing up. So in your case, the, the main railings coming in there, I mean, one, they're too thick, they're, they're too low or too high, there's no extensions top and bottom. You get very, their stair treads are not uniform.
Oh, yeah.
And then in some cases
And they twist around.
Yeah. And you need one and a half inch to grip. And I think at the bottom, it's like, I couldn't even get my fingernail into, you can't even grip it. So it's that close to the wall. So, yeah, your best bet, if you ever use that, basically, if you, if there are two separate services, if the bottom was used for one thing and your other was assembly area, then yes, you can just say no, close that for the upper level. See, we're on the subject of, the problems with that building on that ramp is a lot of non-compliance issues there. The slopes, no one railing, heights, no extensions. You don't have a level landing. You don't have actually kind of a clear width between, if you had another railing. And then you've got those light fixtures or stones on the outside which are protruding objects because of the height of the protruding. So that would need a whole new redo on a ramp into that building.
Yeah. So really, there's no handicapped accessibility in that building? If the, if you say the ramps doesn't
Well, I mean, you can get, but it's not compliant. I think there, I mean, I've got a, I think the slopes are up to 10.5%, 8.3, yeah, 9.5 to 10.5%. 8.3 is the max allowed. So, yeah, there's, if it was going to be regularly used for that ramp, it would be addressed there. And that's one thing Mike had mentioned. So, I mean, Jessica, you were there the day you let us in. We went to go in there and go and shovel with, and not to knock anyone, the shovel width on the ramp was this much. So Mike, we're looking at, Mike, I don't think you can get up there today because it's all ice and cake. So it's like, so, you know.
So some of our maintenance has to be adjusted.
Yeah, yeah. So things need to be maintained for 36-inch clearance. Now, that was a prime example because we had a tough time.
Going down.
We were slipping and sliding.
Yeah, yeah, the two of us, yes.
I know, found a good parking space, two, two boots.
I know. It's like, oh, now we can't go inside. So, let me give you a timeframe. It's usually within two years, three to five, seven to nine.
Let me ask you a question while you're seated in here. We get complaints in here. Do you hear the, sort of the fan thing going on? The people come in and they say, can you have that, can you shut it off? Which we can't. I can't hear. Is that something that we would have to address?
Yeah. So, well, so that's a reasonable combination. And that's one thing, something they need. And that would something you would have to, so yes, you'd have to either find, rent, or lease. I'm going to go back in a second. Portable ALS system, system. You can also apply, as sometimes worked with, an MOD funding to apply for portable ones. You can do up to six to 12 receivers. Technically, I don't think the threshold here, you need it to have the requirement because of the number of seating you have. I think it's 50 or more. But if it's, if it's a reasonable combination request, you would need to. You can buy them for $5,000 to $10,000. You can go through MOD, the same thing that funded this plan, now the plan is done, MOD grant in the fall, to buy that portable, which can be used then at town meetings, can be used here, could be other town, you know, meetings that need it. Somebody requested it, they made contact, oh, yeah, well, don't look. You train your staff on it and then you bring it to site and have people use it. It's basically, you know, like a, you know.
An earpiece.
Yeah.
We have to, and we could go for the ring. You should be careful because sometimes they pick up white noise, too. We find that in our office when they pipe in white noise. And we've had difficulty with people with hearing aids that it like breaks up the volume on that. So I'm sure they've figured out some system that modifies for that.
But, I mean, we do generally have people who complain about the acoustics, especially if they're seated through the back of the room. We try to accommodate with, but when it was, you know, COVID, we were all trying to keep away from one another. So it was a little more challenging. But you've got some great pictures, I have to say.
So cost, we have a cost. Now, cost is, you know, getting a little dicey these days because everything's changed. So, you know, that's costing possibly. So it's a couple of things. I'm going to talk some general stuff for buildings, rec area sidewalks. I can, I can, if you call it out specifically some buildings, I'll leave it up to you. So a couple of quick things to note. So tolerances. So there are tolerances per industry standard that are allowed for it, for when we do these assessments. So zero to two inches, up to eight inches difference. Two to 36, up to half inch, more than 36, up to one inch. So reach range. So I said 48 inches. So if it was 48 and a half inches or 42 and a half inches, you're within the tolerance. Okay. We, so we won't write it up. We'll say, okay, we're in tolerance. Where tolerances don't come into play are on slopes. So 5% is the max for a accessible route without just a regular walkway. 8.3% with, as a ramp. So technically, if it's 8.5%, you know, it's out of compliance. You need railings. I mean, if you exceed railings, if it's eight point, you know, if it's 5.4%, 5.2%, you need railings. When we look at that, in many cases, it depends on, on the extent. So if you've got a segment that would be five feet, that's at 5.2%, you know, we'll, we'll see, go for varies. In that case, with the ramps, too, are 31 feet. You can't go more than 30 feet without level landing. So if it's 31 feet and access board has granted from our experience, one foot, maybe two feet, but we're still trying to go for varies. Unless, like the ramp at town hall, there's so many things that need to be addressed, just, you know, door reconstruction. There's also, so a range of dimensions. With this, a range of dimensions goes, that range is your tolerance though. So grab bars are 33 inches to 36 inches above the finished floor to the top of the gripping surface. Stair railings, 34 to 38 inches. Toilet seats, water closets are 17 to 19 inches. That's the seat height. So if you're at 16 and a half on a toilet seat, if you're at 32 and 3/4 for a grab bar, if you're at 38 and a half at the stair railing, nope, you're, you're not compliant. You'd either lower it, raise it, whatever it's got to be to buy a different height, you know, toilet seat. So we also, you know, consider that. We can bring that in report. You know, frankly, I feel kind of stupid sometimes. Yeah, you gotta lower your grab bar one quarter inch. Technically, it's not compliant. And, you know, you just have to write it up that way. And that's what we do. And you have to prioritize, you know, what needs more important. There are some areas where we recognize as a state where they're not going to be, they're currently not open to the public per se. And they're, the personnel who use those areas must need strict physical requirements to perform the essential functions of their position. Police, fire, could be TPW. So there are areas where you have your bunk rooms ready for fire, police might, or in light of a workout room, might be back in the area where they have other, whatever. And as long as, you know, it was strictly just limited to the police, fire personnel, and there's no public access per se, then in many cases, unless you apply like the bunk rooms or there's a second floor level, which suggests, you know, there could be a reasonable accommodation request from a, from an employee there. Or if you change the use of that area, if you start having public meetings up there, start having public up there to do, conduct business, then you need to address those areas. A perfect example is your fire station down in South Berry, which is closed to the public. There's been a number of issues there, not accessible, blah, blah, blah. But it's firefighters, it's not, what, if it ever became open to the public or made for a different use, you'd have to do some major modifications. It's clearly just, you've got the equipment there and it's just for your firefighters who must need certain physical conditions to do their jobs. You wouldn't have to do anything unless you do a change in use in the future. So I'm going to go through some general buildings, areas, and then we'll go through some general rec, general curb ramp. If you want, I can go through some bullets on others or just open up a question. So general areas, which we found quite, quite a bit across the board, you know, parking, either no parking, no access aisles. The running slopes or cross slopes were excessive. So levels is going to be 2% or less, not designated as van accessible. They didn't have the width for the access aisle or the space itself as van accessible. In some cases, the signage was too high, too low, or just non-existent. Even in some of the newer buildings, unfortunately. In some cases, there are abrupt changes in level surface. An abrupt change in level surface is more than one quarter inch if it's not, if it's unbottled, up to half inch if beveled, one and two slope. We had that in the public safety area, a couple other areas. No level landings. You had this in public safety from that curb ramp. Needs to be a level landing, certain width. And in some cases, running, excuse me, cross slopes on the accessible route to the building entrance were excessive. I guess he did some of the specifics. Senior Center was a major case. So the senior center on the upper level along the building sidewalk, it had cross slopes of up to 7.7, 7.8%. 2% is the max. So, I mean, if you got a little ice or something coming in, that's a problem. That's an issue with you. And you're at some areas which you need a level landing in the entrance to the building. So those were occurred throughout. Lack of tactile designation signage on doors, you know, there, there. And certain height on the lever side of the door. In many cases, lack of lever style hardware, knob style hardware. Drinking fountains, drinking fountains must be high-low. In a lot of cases, just low only. I think in one of the reckless areas, it was, oh, it was Town Hall. There was a drinking fountain, I think the height was 39 inches. The source was high, I guess. Had a, quote, Christ, twisting of the wrist, pinching, and no need clearance. It's an old, it was stones. So
I don't think that's even functional, though.
Yeah. So that would be something, if it is, just
I think it's just really more of a
Decorative.
Yeah, ornamental.
So I think I, in there, we say, you know, take it out of service. And if it's the option one, take out a service, option two, if you're going to, that's what you got to do. I mentioned stair railings. So a lot of cases, stair railings were in many buildings throughout. We've got some here, I mentioned town hall, others. They must be round or oval in shape. A lot of them are rectangular in shape. They also had that at the gazebo on Town Hall, rectangular in shape. Must be at that 34 to 30 inches. Must have top extensions, 12 inches, and the bottom, the slope distance of one tread, and 12 inches parallel to the ground or floor. Throughout, that wasn't the case. I mentioned reach range already. Office counters, service counters, 36 inches, 36 inch width. So that would be like in here or other locations, I think senior center. But if it's a food service counter, it's 34 inches. It's two inches lower. And that would also be for a kitchenette. I think you have one here, a couple other areas in the buildings where they had kitchenettes. They typically were at 36 inches, it'd be 34. And there was no need clearance. And again, I mentioned that the ADA governance play workspaces. So that being the case, you know, because you could have, some of your, you know, support staff can be in a wheelchair, do their job perfectly fine.
Yep.
But they can't use the kitchenette like everyone else can use. Door operating force and closing speed. So throughout the whole jurisdiction, 15 pounds operating force to the max for an exterior door, five pounds for an interior door, those are doors with closers, five pounds for an interior door, and a maximum of six seconds closing speed. Five seconds under ADA, six seconds in the 521. So you go at six seconds, a little more, you know, ability to close. Bathrooms, bathrooms throughout, they vary according to where you, you know, you're at. But typical things would be, sometimes the threshold into the door, I think the bathroom is excessive. Cold hicks being too high, lights switches too high. Sinks that piping blow is not wrapped, guarded, or insulated. Maybe the faucets require pinching or twisting. You might have dispensers that are so for towels that are more than 42 inches. The mirror must be no more than 40 inches above finished floor to the bottom reflecting surface. We typically see that they're framed by, could be a nice big wooden frame, could be a little thin metal frame. And typically installers, I mean, you've probably seen in the new buildings, the schools are in, they use the frame. It's not the frame, it's the reflecting surface. So in your case, I mean, ties was, you know, they're actually quite high. So we're not using like a person in a wheelchair. Urinals, that would be too high, 17 inches the max. You might have 19 inches. And very typical, and we, and yeah, we found this in brand new school buildings. A few of stalls. Stalls must open out, not in. Many cases, in brand new buildings, they open in because you don't, because you need the turning radius once you're in there. And then in many cases, the doors are not self-closing. They need to be self-closing. And in many cases here, you didn't have interior and exterior pull devices. Most places, they have exterior, but no interior. Well, if the door doesn't self-close, then if you're, you've got to reach down to the bottom of the door to try to close it. And so if you had a pull device, you could easily close it. and so if you had a pull device, you could easily close it. And then a locking mechanism that's required pinching and twisting in your wrist, you know, a, a pulse fist, and just, you know, close it. Um, the interior part itself, you know, we found in some cases, the toilet paper, top, toilet paper, I guess, yes, were not mounted at the proper height. So it'd need to be at least twenty-four inches in front of the toilet, uh, at, between seven inches and nine inches on center and front. Too far in some cases, in case right inside of the toilet, um, your grab bars, that, in some cases, were too high or too low, I mentioned that. And so I think we had one of the cases, maybe they're too far from the interior corner, there's different requirements based upon visual or, or sign. Uh, and in some cases, the setback, so too close, too far from near wall, too close to the far wall, too close to the front, and you're, you know, again, it's all more, more detail in there. Um, in some areas, right there, um, those glass panes, that's very old, but, um, glass panes, if the, and this is only under ADA, this is not covered under five twenty-one. If they're on accessible roof, which this is on the accessible roof, they can be no more than forty-three inches above finished floor. So I guess either the one thing, you spend a lot of money redoing, or you can block them or frost them. Most times people just block them or frost them, 'cause everything's supposed to be equal. If I can't see, if you or I can't see them through, then, you know, Mike can't see through, then I'm gonna go with this.
That's a good decision.
See that?
Okay.
So, let me just, let me just jump over to then, um, the rec areas. So rec areas, um, if it's solely passive or conservation, and the sites we were given were basically the cemeteries and rocking stone park, they're unapproved areas. I mean.
Nothing good's going on.
Nothing's going on here, so you don't have to do anything, unless you started doing something. In some cemeteries, they have nice little walking trails still, and some little conservation areas, you've got maybe a walking trail to the rocking stone, and maybe you got a little picnic table there, and some. What, if you start doing that stuff, then you gotta start, you know, making accessible routes, and if you don't do anything else, you're good. Um, you know, in general, on the rec areas, and I'm only gonna really focus on, go on to, um, I mentioned Felton. Um, there needs to be accessible route of travel to that sort, so I'm sure most of you, the, the Harborside and that big rec area, I forget the name of it.
Friendship.
What's it called?
Friendship.
Is it Friendship Park?
Right.
Uh, um, Curtis Recreation, yeah. Uh, the playground is, um, rainbows and playground.
Playground to the front, right, yeah.
Yeah, and they have, see, both the path around.
So there is a, a, pretty much around that facility, so that's kinda same thing, should be accessible routes around facilities. Um, two areas, so two, uh, to ball, if it's to ball field, the players' seating, this is beach seating, their future seating. There needs to be a wheelchair, uh, flat area for a wheelchair, next to those areas, next to like the beach seating, um, there needs to be an accessible route to, the playground itself, to and around the playground, and to within, to play components. Um, now, mostly had, uh, woodchips, and woodchip is, may be acceptable as a fall zone, uh, under the STM standard, as American Society for Testing Materials, um, but not as an accessible roof. An accessible roof, you know, it does have to be, be a very expensive rubberized matting, there are some, if a matting, it can be stone, so it could be pavement, but there needs to be accessible roof, so. Uh, and you don't have to make every single player on accessible, if you've got five playgrounds on town, I think you get three or four, um, maybe one is the quote-unquote accessible, and you have some small, little neighborhood ones, if not, that's not necessarily the case, so, um, you know, that was common, excessive, uh, yeah, so let me go to very common, so very common, similar thing, no accessible roof, gazebo, some benches there, um, gazebo itself, uh, I think the steered treads were not uniform. The railings were tangler, there are no top butt extensions, there is no accessible roof to itself, and I understand you have band performances up there, and I think one of your very notable state senators plays in there.
I believe she does, occasionally.
Yeah, okay, so, um, it'll probably get some funding for, for that, you know, little twist of the yard.
Well, we would hope, but that has been, shall we say, under repair for four years?
Three years.
Three years, four years, so we continue to, um, you know, hope springs eternal for us on that, opening that up. So, I, it, not only, I mean, it's a little overwhelming to hear all the things that we don't have, but, um, we know that there's opportunities for us.
Sure.
Utilizing your help and, yeah.
So one of the things on the common, which is, was full of glaring, was there were four of the entry points, had these granite boilerars.
Yep.
Right in the middle.
Yeah.
So entry points are, are minimum thirty, and I would say entry points, 'cause doorways, we also entry points, just minimum thirty-two inches. Thirty-six, thirty-six inch accessible route of travel, uh.
That was to keep bicycles off the common, is my guess.
Well, sixteen inches to twenty-eight inches, so bicycles, but also, young parents with strollers.
Yeah, can't do it either.
Are I gonna go away, or I'm in a walker?
Yeah.
I gotta go way over, yeah, so yeah, that's a little problematic.
Yeah.
Um, Norway Park, there is no, that's accessible parking, there's no accessible route travel to the gazebo, to the benches, the picnic tables. Picnic table didn't have need clearance or need depth.
Right.
And the railings were not compliant on the gazebo, the portable toilet was regular and not accessible roof. Um, uh, Felton Field, I mean, oh, there's different issues there, the buildings and the bathrooms, and you know that.
I do indeed.
I'm not gonna go into it, but, you know, we treat it as really not having to go all, there's three separate areas, three separate function areas. You've got the building and the tennis courts, you've got the equation area, you've got the baseball way back.
And the soccer field, right.
So it'd be much more manageable to treat them as separate entities, so if you had one parking area here, and ways to get there, and, you know, that sort of thing, so that's detailed in there. Um, so sidewalks and curb ramps, we, we looked basically at South Berry, and we looked just around the new construction of, of South Berry Road a little bit, and then around the Town Hall, uh, just a couple quick comments. So, um, sidewalk deterioration tremendously on South Berry Road, and particularly there is this big manhole cover, which is about a, one or two inch abrupt change level surface, so that's an issue.
We've got new sidewalks down there now.
At the front?
Yeah.
Are they over South Berry?
Um, well, I think they, they're, they're down in front of where the old mill was.
Yeah.
New sidewalks there.
And that was happening when we did, so we, what we saw was okay.
You're talking about going up, over the hill there, toward, okay.
Going up towards Town.
Gotcha, yeah, okay.
And then, which is kinda strange, there's two detectable warning strips on, um, the side where the, you know, store is on the corner.
Mm-hmm.
And it just, and which would direct you across South Berry Road, to nowhere.
I know, yeah.
Okay, so just, it's in report.
Yeah.
Um, so, and then around the Town Hall area, um, the ramp at the tap roof, uh, is a tap roof, it was a business, is that what you read, okay? Uh, has a running slope of eight, eight point eight percent.
Where's that?
Where the Berry Bazaar used to be.
Oh, gotcha, okay, yeah, I know, yeah.
And then it only has a railing on one side, technically.
Yeah.
Um, and there were some areas with excessive cross slopes and excessive two percent.
I would say so, yeah. I, what, what about, um, where our cobblestone kind of, you know, when, in front of the Town Hall, and, you know, it has cobblestone.
Right.
Going down, I mean, I would suspect it's a little rough ride.
Oh, but that's natural terrain, so you can't make, so areas that have natural terrain, you can't, there's no way.
So you just leave that.
Right. The problem is, we had some on the other side of the common.
Yeah.
Where you've got some curb ramps, which, you don't have, you still need a level landing, even with.
Yeah.
You know, so there were no level landings, actually, you have some, there are, it's over across the street over here, which you get the curb ramp, and then it's like a twelve percent slope, so you need to have a turning. Um, so even with that there, it would be fine if you had a level landing, because you can't change the.
Okay.
Side.
So we don't worry about that.
And, and you had a couple, um, in the common area, which, again, the, the lack of level landing, and then there was one crossing that, I think, constant wall in South Street, which didn't have detectable warning strips. So, I mean, in a nutshell, I guess, for an hour and ten minutes, um, that's the, that's the general part we need for it, but, you know, the details are in the report, so.
Right, right. Um, obviously, we have some work to do, and, um.
I know it's a, always big scary numbers when we go through them, especially, it's tough to hear all of them, but, uh, you have good legal protection, especially now that you have a plan, as long as you're making good faith efforts to make improvements, and there are funding sources to do that, so.
Yeah, well, and funding sources that you can assist us with, I assume.
There's the Mass Ops Disability Grant, which is a state program, uh, really straightforward, and there are grants every October, as long as the state keeps funding. Uh, and then you have your community development block grants, which I think the town is in better standing than it is to get now, so. Uh, that's a, that's a good funding source too, sometimes those can fund bigger things like elevators, well.
Well.
I don't know if that's truly going down, but things are more, things can go along well.
You need to get the design, so, you know, not fund construction under CBG unless you have the design completed, so you need to have the design, so you could fund design for different things.
Yeah.
And then in next year, go off for construction, and I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, MOD will not fund design, but will fund construction.
Um, tell, tell me a little bit about the, the typical cost for a handicapped accessible playground for children, obviously for children.
Yeah, so it really varies, depends on size and all, so, that's why, that's another, yeah, you didn't have any sort of playground.
I know, we don't have any.
So it depends on how, how you want to do it, so you could have some areas, um, which have the total rubberized, throughout the whole of the play area. And I'm trying to remember now, the cost per square foot, is it twenty-five dollars a square foot?
Probably.
Um. That's the new one in Templeton, is we might be able to get a number from the.
Yeah, and Harborsen, Harborsen just finished one or two over there.
Yeah, they did woodchips, but they have rubberized paths.
And that, right, that's, as I said, the accessible route to the area, playgrounds, and that's, yeah, so you can cut your costs down considerably by just having the, the woodchips around the fall zone area, and then having your, um, rubberized or other.
We've, we've been just contemplating the idea of using some of our ARPA funds for a playground, because that's one thing, from a community perspective, there's been a call for, you know, uh, having, uh, having a playground to snot on school property, because those are always closed during most of the day, to, to students, I mean, to children, so, um.
That's why I meant the Harborsen one or the Templeton one is often.
Yeah, so, so at any rate, we're, we're thinking of that, we have one that's in terrible shape up in the High Plains area.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, a liability nightmare right there, um, so we really know we need to, you know, retool that area.
One of the better ones that I've seen.
Okay.
Is in my neck of the woods more, um, and it's, 'cause it, it was, the person who started the fundraising, I thought, her child, uh, from, young child.
Yeah, he's now eighteen and the playground just opened.
Unfortunately, the, the daughter, she was maybe early twenties, and he made it after she'd passed for her, called Jessica's Playground, it's in Belch Town. Right in front of the elementary school.
Okay.
And designed solely hundred percent compliant, for, so you, you have the ramp, that the wheelchairs need up there, but it's multipurpose, you have all kids there, of all abilities. And, so that's one of the better ones, they have rubberized, I think they might have some woodchips, but in terms of the play equipment and all that.
Yeah.
Um, and they did a lot, lot of fundraising, and they might have got some grants, but that's probably one of the better accessible ones I've seen. You know, it's huge, 'cause it's schools, you don't have to go that bit.
Right, right, right.
But I think that's a good one to look at, if you have a chance to go out there, right, you know.
I'm out there all the time.
We're out there all the time, there you go.
I know exactly what you're talking about, it's beautiful.
You know, you know the one I'm talking about.
The one in Worcester, Ellen Park is one of ours too, for being.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm in that area sometimes, so I'll take a look at that. No, we're, we're really kind of, I mean, the, the one that's up in High Plains, which is really the only one, other than the ones that are on school property, that's available, is, oh, it's like, like a horror show, I would go out by there, and wanna do this, because obviously, it doesn't, doesn't conform to any regulations. The kinds of equipment that's on there are dangerous, I mean, we should be ripping it out, so, I know that we wanna kind of use some ARPA funds for that, and it might be a good way to start, you know, get some community involvement, because people are interested and involved in that, and there's a lot of children up in that area, for sure.
And it's, again, it's not just for the children who might be, you know, hopefully, but, I mean, the parent, the parent, the parent needs to be able to get there to, if his child, her child, needs some assistance, so you need to be able to get to that, you know?
Right, yeah, so, and, and some nice designs out there, so thank you for giving us some ideas about other ones to look at, but, uh, and I know that's only one small thing we have in front of us, but that's something that I, I personally, and wanna address, since that's something that parent, parents have brought to our attention. And then we don't have a lot of things for children, we really don't, it's the schools are nothing, pretty much, and I'd be, and our.
Library, but.
Yeah, and the library, library's been really reaching out, we've got a new director there, so that's been really helpful, so.
It, that was funny, you mentioned the library, I think, uh, go ahead, maybe a month after Jim and I, uh, you know, did our access assessment there, uh, there was a big article, uh, in the paper about the.
Must have been the Indians.
Wall top floor that, uh, that holds, holds the, uh, PT and, uh.
Museum, yeah.
Yep.
Couldn't catch it.
Well, yeah, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, we do have an, you know, an elevator, you can get there, just, it's a little, it's a little, like, hidden away, but, yeah, we're, we're, um, involved in the whole repatriation thing, so we're working hard on that.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, you know, just, just, uh, know that, uh, you, you know, uh, you know, that, you know, Jim and I are available, uh, you know, even after this presentation, uh, you know, with.
You have no idea, you're giving us eye contact, that is not a good thing.
Yeah, no, no.
I know where you live, kinda thing, yeah, because, because obviously, we have work to do, and we are not, at least I do not feel credentialed to say, oh, I think we should do X first. I think it will be important to have a conversation with Jim and yourself to say, okay, where would you start, and why, and, um, how would you begin to think about which grants to go for and not? Which ones should we look for ARPA funds for, because we do have ARPA money that we have not, and said, you know, a list, this is what we're going to do, we know we have some HVAC things that we might look at. Um, but of course, everybody wants, oh, just buy two fire trucks and wrap it up, you know, or just buy an ambulance and a fire truck. I mean, not that we don't need those things, we do, but we really have to try to reach out to, to improve our community, and to include, you know, all, all areas of the community in, in our work with ARPA, so. I know people are waiting for us to, to roll out something, and we've been reluctant, because we knew this was coming, we have other, uh, issues of concern. Uh, we've got two, two things voted at town meeting for a new ambulance and a, and a new fire truck, but of course, that's long term, because by the time you can even get them, it's three, three and four years from now, but, at any rate, and I know that we have a fire, um, feasibility fire, you know, um, facility, uh, and we're hopeful to have that happen, but that's gonna be challenging to get the overrides for and dead exclusions for, for sure.
But, can I ask you?
No, I have a question, not gonna ask it, 'cause it's not, no.
Uh, just a couple technical questions, um, eight point three slope for curb ramps, I've always heard seven percent as, through Mass DOT, they've always looked for seven. I wasn't sure if that was just difference in new construction versus existing.
So is, is there actually three standards, there's the ADA standard, two thousand and ten, it's five hundred C M R, and just PRO Act, Public Right-of-Wake System Guidelines.
Yeah.
So, and, so it's, it's strict the standard of any applied, so the, the main ramp is eight point three percent is the max, the flared size can go up to ten percent.
Yeah.
So that, that is the standard, it's eight point three and ten, um, on the curb ramps. And then, when you get to the curb ramp, we kinda, we, we're a little flexible on this, we look at the level landing, so some of your sidewalks, 'cause you have to deal with the terrain issue, so. You might go up, and you're still going up, and you're still going up, and then maybe find it, maybe eight feet away, and it's level, well, you know, okay, you do have some terrain, which is there, but there needs to be a, a two percent max landing, 'cause once you're up on the curb ramp, you need to maneuver, and it's hard to maneuver on a slope.
Yeah, great, okay, okay.
And we do have a section, if you look at the, on the curb ramps.
Yeah.
There's whole, we have the, like, a little front end piece of it, which, what all the standards are, so, you know, you can look at those, and we cite the regs to go to.
And then just a, a question on one area that I don't think was, uh, covered, just, just from my own curiosity, there's, um, basically a short bridge that has sidewalk, uh, just at the bridge, and there's no ramps on either side of it, is that something that we should be concerned with?
If it's a sidewalk and there's no cur, 'cause we had a limited scope we heard to look at, so if there's a sidewalk, and it's up, yes, it is an issue. If it leaves, what, is a sidewalk just on a bridge, and beyond that, there's no other sidewalks?
Right.
So it, it doesn't do anything.
It just drops shaft.
It drops up, and beyond there, there's nothing.
Right.
Correct.
There's a footpath, I mean, in fairness, people, I mean, there's an obvious, yeah.
I mean, what we need is something on that road, but that's.
Yeah.
One-twenty-two, that's the standard.
It doesn't serve, well, we.
Those two, it's McCann Street too.
What's that?
It's McCann Street down the bottom, there's, there's.
And it.
I do, yeah. There's a one-twenty-two by the store.
Yeah.
I'm at the Rotary, so they put, so I think, so my guess, that was when the bridge was constructed.
Yeah.
That was anticipation of sidewalks being put in, and then you could make that connection, 'cause it served purpose. We came, I imagine, as mentioned, like, I think it was in Templeton, East Templeton, and at one of the intersections, there was Mass DOT work done, and they put in curb ramps locations, but there's all sidewalks.
Yeah.
So it's the same way, they, they put them in anticipation, at some point, they'll actually put sidewalks in, so that's probably, at that, unless there's nothing else there, it's, no, 'cause it doesn't serve any purpose.
Okay, good to know. Okay, we're good?
I think so, yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for, for coming.
Thank you.
And we're great, we're great to say that we have a very light agenda this evening, so it was nice to be able to spend, um, a good chunk of it on something that was, uh, helpful to us.
Very good, glad to hear it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Jim.
Yeah, you too.
Good to see you working after retirement.
Uh, yeah, you should talk, right?
Yeah, you should talk, right?
Okay, I think we can go back to Jessica, to Town Administrator Report?
Right.
Unless we reported you all out at this point?
No, actually.
Okay.
Right, so I'll start off with saying that Congressman McGovern will be hosting a coffee hour this Saturday, July ninth, at the Senior Center from nine AM to ten AM.
Is there any way to combine that with the toucher truck?
Is there?
The toucher truck is this Saturday as well.
Oh, I actually didn't know about that. Okay, so apparently there's a toucher truck as well. Is it at the same time?
Um.
Maybe, possibly.
It's sometime in the middle of the day. I'll have to double check on that.
Yeah.
I just want to go and whine about our sewer loan.
Yeah, gee.
I just, I still cannot grapple with the idea that because our per capita income is too high, I just, I want to know what data they use for that. And I mean, you know, Jason Pimental said it's a result of the number of individuals who really own most of the property in South Barry, they're the ones considered in the per capita calculation, which makes little sense to me, when, but anyway, would love to chat with him about that.
Okay, great. So he will be there on Saturday. I received in my email an invitation, so I'm assuming if you go to his website or somewhere, there might be some more details and a place where you can say that you are going, so they can get kind of an idea on how many people are going to come.
So they'll have enough coffee?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, sure, okay.
And then to tie into the point that Maureen was making, the Sewer Commission did vote to decrease the scope of the sewer project to accommodate a smaller budget. As we discussed at a previous meeting, USDA had only offered about a twelve point six or twelve point seven percent grant to loan ratio, so the Sewer Commission had to go back to the drawing board and determine what was a must-have and what was something that could potentially be done in-house, it might just take a little bit longer to get done. So that's what they did last week, and we were able to sign a four million dollar loan with a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant for a total funding package of four million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars with an interest rate of two percent over a forty-year term. As far as the DPW goes, MassDOT is in the process of kicking off a bridge replacement project on Old Coldbrook Road over the Prince River, so this is near Felton Field and Palmer Paving. We will be having a series of meetings, including a site visit next Friday, over the next couple of weeks. At this time, I do not have an estimated timeline for replacement or when the project will be completed, but I do know that it will be completed by the state, which is good.
Do you know what time they're, when they're starting it?
I won't know any details until I go to these meetings, but John, I don't know if you can speak to the timeline of these things, but I know they take forever.
So especially the MassDOT review process can be a bit complicated, there's usually, I mean, for road projects, there's usually at least three rounds of reviews between designer and MassDOT that can take, you know, four to five years in design. Things can be streamlined depending on placement, but also bridges are something I haven't gotten as deep into.
Yeah.
Kind of learning that right now with a project. So I would, I would guess probably five years before construction, but that's complete speculation, so.
Yeah, I know from my experience that bridge projects take a very, very long time. The engineering is incredibly complex, and so I don't want people to think that this is something that's going to happen overnight or in the relatively near future, but we're starting the process, which is good. And for the two-fiftieth anniversary committee, Dr. Marshall and I met with Richard Stevens, the Chair of the two-fiftieth Anniversary Committee, to discuss the financial needs of the committee, as well as plan, as well as the plan of events that the committee plans to host. Later last week, I did receive a list of estimated costs for events, and they estimate it will cost approximately a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars without accounting for public safety details, and.
Without accounting for details?
Without accounting for those. So the chiefs and I are going to start discussing over the next couple of weeks how we want to plan to budget for this and start to get an idea on what the costs will be as well.
So we could probably have, get some insights from Rutland?
Yes, yes. So once we have kind of a final idea of what the, what the overall budget will be for that, we can go back and determine what the town's financial obligation will need to be to allow the two-fiftieth committee to put on the series of events that they're.
They're recommending.
Look, that, yes, that they're recommending.
Okay.
So out of the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe they said they already have twenty-five thousand dollars raised, and they're continuing to fundraise over the next couple of years. We also received a suite of requests for town property and special events permits for, already for 2024, so they're being very proactive and getting those dates secured and getting the paperwork done, so that'll be coming at a future meeting. That's what I have for today.
Okay, thank you very much. Select Board reports, anything, John?
Just again, with the Sewer Department, appreciate the work they put in to keep that loan below what was previously talked about, keeping the impact below what was talked about, and making sure, you know, assuring me that what they're getting with it will outlast the length of this loan, that it will be long-term. Also, the Water Department meeting and the work they're putting in to get everything cleaned up, looking for a new location potentially for a different well, so just going to thank them on the work they're doing.
And I know that there's been some issues with, shall we say, brown water in the community in the last week, and they've been working very hard on a leak, working with, you know, external contractors and so forth in order to try to find that leak and to remediate it. It's really been pretty busy for the DPW who has in the, in the Water Department, and it was, and I agree with John, it was great because we had like a three-tiered meeting. We had the Sewer Commission meeting, and then we had the Water Commission meeting, and then we had the DPW meeting, which included all of the members, and it was, it was helpful to watch all of the things happen. And I agree also with John to say that the Sewer Commission's efforts to ensure that the user fees would remain relatively exactly as it was purported in our town, in our special town meeting when they talked about the project. So that's, that's the good news, and the bad news is we did not get the amount of funding and the grant from the federal government that we had hoped for. And seeing that the, our Representative McGovern will be available to me on Saturday, I will pursue reasoning about why that is. Not that he will have it, but he will tell me he will look into it, I'm sure. Anyway, anything else, John?
That's all I have.
Okay, I think that's all I have as well. I would like to commend the new library director. I've had numerous individuals, you know, kind of talk about some of the things that are being done that are so different, a lot of involvement with our, you know, children in the community. And I know I've been at the library on Saturday, and it's like crazy busy. I was there on, I'm trying to think what evening it was, and they were down to Narnay Park with some big event that they had, you know, lots.
The zoo petting.
It was a great time, yeah.
Yeah.
With the nice big box turtles and some little monkeys.
Yeah, so, I mean, great, great stuff, and nice to see, very nice to see. Public hearing, we're all set with, the ADA planning, we certainly are set with. You have a wage authorization vote for DPW FY23 COLA, which is three percent, I believe, just like all other employees, correct?
Yes, so we, yeah, we have the COLA authorization, I just received it a couple days after the meeting we had last.
Right, because I signed everything, right.
Yep, so this is kind of a procedural vote. And then Timothy Ford, she is essentially being moved from part-time to a full-time employee, so her wage is staying the same, but we still need to authorize just to move to those full-time hours.
Okay, so, we do those separately, the DPW FY23 COLA is exactly the same as other departments at three percent for FY23? Do we have a motion?
Yep, I move to authorize the COLA wage authorizations for the DPW for fiscal year twenty-three.
I would second that. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's a vote. And the recommendation of the chief to move Timothy Ford to full-time at the same salary rate as.
She actually, she works for the library, I should clarify that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
From part-time to full-time. I know, when we talk about part-time to full-time, we always think about.
Well, I do.
Police and Fire Department, but this one's library.
Okay, so that's a library employee will be moving to full-time, and I think that is going to help us keep the library open on Fridays during the week. We have a recommendation for that? Make motion to?
Recommendation or motion?
Or make motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion to authorize, for the wage authorization to move Timothy Ford from part-time to full-time.
Any, I will second that. Questions, comments? Okay?
I assume this, is, they're able to cover this with the budget for the library?
Yes.
Yes, it's actually the position that the current library director vacated.
Okay, so it's filling an existing position?
Yeah, so he sent out a internal post job posting, and Timothy applied and was selected as a candidate to take over for him.
We have a motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, second vote. Boards and Commission, it looks like we are accepting a resignation for Robin Kelly from the Council on Aging, is that correct?
Yes.
I move acceptance.
I'd second.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Looks like we are going to be making some recommendations based upon bid openings?
Actually, so.
Extensions.
These are extensions, and I have the contracts right here, just for you guys to peruse, but the, essentially the way that our bids are designed for road materials is, so for years two and three, we are offered a one-year extension at the same price.
At the same rate?
Yep.
Could be that right now.
And I've spoken with other towns who have similar clauses in their bids, and they have successfully extended their contracts at the same price as well, which I think we were all kind of surprised about.
So we're, basically, everything that you were recommending here, Jessica, is in compliance with procurement?
Yes.
Okay. And you're seeking approval and signatures on these documents?
Correct, so there's a, underneath those cover sheets.
I see it, yeah.
And if you have questions about the pricing, I have the pricing sheet up in my office.
Well, I've seen the pricing before, last year when they actually approved the original, the original bids, and to say that they are the same and we are able to have an extension is probably in our best interest.
Are these on specific projects?
No.
No, it's in gen, yeah, in general.
Just sort of an own call?
Yep. Whatever project that we're doing.
And I would move approval of these contract extensions as long as they are in full compliance with procurement requirements.
I'd second.
Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we will be approving those by signature. And we have regional EMS agreements?
Right, so I have these agreements here, too. You guys can sign those at your own pace, but essentially what these agreements are, are the EMS agreements that we have with Hardwick and New Braintree. And we just are up for renewal with the contracts, and the Fire Chief and I met together and also had discussions with the other towns, New Braintree and Hardwick, about essentially the cost is the only thing that we have recommend change. So last year was our first year with Hardwick, and we contracted with them at twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And then this year, we're recommending a slight increase to thirty thousand dollars, essentially because Hardwick has decided to go with another service provider on the other half of town that may lead to an increase in service calls for our department. And also, we are trying, in our best effort to increase our receipts and also provide a better service, we are trying to increase our staff as well, as you both know, so this is to.
Has this been, has this been approved by Hardwick?
Yes.
And, okay, so this is just a perfunctory approval on our end, as they have already approved these, this increase?
Yes, I've, I've met with this town administrator in Hardwick as well, and we discussed the rate increase, and, you know, she was okay with it. And again, this, the Hardwick one specifically, since it is such a new contract, it is only a one-year contract, so every, you know, for the first couple of years, we can just revisit and adjust when necessary, so if we find at the end of this year that it's, you know, we need to revisit those numbers, we can do that. And then the same goes for the New Braintree contract. We held the rate at fifteen thousand dollars for this year, and then we slightly bumped it to seventeen-five for the following two years, just because.
Their Select Board has no knowledge of this and approved it?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
But to continue to provide the service at the increased cost that we have, we need to reflect, and I think that's.
Well, I think we had a really good maiden voyage. I commend certainly Chief Rigowsky on making this all work, and happy to see an increase in revenues for us, as well as a hopeful continued good service to those communities.
Right.
Could I have a vote to, in, okay, provide, continue, continue to enjoy the, sort of the cooperative agreement between the town of New Braintree and Barry relative to its EMS responsibilities, and that that increase would be to seventeen-five, and we'd need a motion on that.
I move to accept the town of Barry and New Braintree agreement for ambulance services.
I would second that. Any further questions or comments about that? I think, can I think, ready? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like that's an approval for the town of New Braintree and Barry, and now do you approve the agreement between the town of Barry and the town of Hardwick with the adjustment in costs?
I move to accept the contract for ambulance service with the town of Barry and the town of Hardwick with the adjusted cost.
I would second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it looks like we have those approved. Again, our commendation to the chief, I mean, I know this wasn't easy, and everything seemed to work really well, and that didn't happen by accident, I think we know that. I don't have any other things, how about you, John?
Nope, don't have anything for new business world.
Moving into executive session, it appears we need to go into executive session as required under Master General Law 30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief and the lieutenant.
I move to enter executive session, subject to Master General Law 30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel.
I second that. We'd need a roll call on that.
Dixon, yes?
Marshall, yes? I guess we're in executive session.